Call our meeting to order this evening. This is our August 6, Tuesday, 2019, meeting. And I would like to introduce our invocation tonight. It's going to be a moment of silence, but I would like for you to keep in mind the folks that have been involved in the shootings in El Paso and Ohio. And I would also like for you to keep in your thoughts and prayers the Lowell High School student that lost his life this week. So if you would bow with me for a moment of silence. If you would stand and remove cover for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Jones, I would ask you this evening if we have adjustments to the agenda?
We do have two adjustments. The first item is removal of item 8.3 under Administrative Matters. That one should be stricken from the agenda entirely. And the other item is the addition of some comments by Commissioner Halt under New Business.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones. We have no presentations of special recognitions or awards this evening. We do have an appointment before the Board. That is a request from the Iredell Council on Aging Incorporated to present the proposed FY 2020 Funding Plan. And we will, I guess, have Ms. Rice come to the podium now.
Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the Board, another year has passed, and that means you have the distinct pleasure of hearing me talk about our aging population again as we consider the 2020 Aging Funding Plan. Iredell County is aging, and we're in the midst of a demographic shift where our 60-plus population now numbers almost 38,000 people and is about 21% of the county's total population. And like the entire state, our 60-plus population continues to show significant growth. A stark reminder of just how much we're growing. In just three short years, those 60 and over will outnumber our 17 and underage group. The baby boomers who were born before 1960, doesn't seem that long ago, are now eligible for services, and they are making their presence known, often quite loudly, increasing the demand for services and the variety of services they want and need. At the other end of our aging timeline, our 80s and older are the fastest-growing segment of the aging population. The COA's challenge, then, is to provide services to not only a growing senior population, but also a diverse group of seniors. We often say, if you've seen a senior citizen, you've seen one senior citizen. There's the 60s cohort, who are aging and becoming more vulnerable with each passing year, and the frail elderly, who can remain in their homes and in their communities with some support. What does this mean for our county? It means that we need to provide a range of services along the continuum of care. Meeting the needs of the 60-year-old who lost her manufacturing job, she has little-to-know basic computer skills and doesn't even know where to turn, as most jobs vacancies require applying online now. Or what about the 65-year-old facing a decision about a Medicare Part D prescription drug plan? Meanwhile, we're also addressing the different needs of the 90-year-old, who only recently lost his longtime spouse, desperately trying to remain independent and in his home and in his comfort zone. The proposed 2020 Aging Funding Plan reflects our best efforts to continue providing vital services such as transportation to medical appointments or the grocery store, and will help the 85-year-old woman living at Statesville's Kings Grant or Mooresville's Curlin Commons stay in her apartment by providing Level 1 chore services once a week, maintaining both a clean and a safe environment for her to live independently. We'll help the 64-year-old son, whose mother is 90 years old, and she's suffering from Alzheimer's disease coupled with diabetes and congestive heart failure. Our Level 2 respite services mean the son, who still runs the family farm in Mooresville, can attend to his work without worrying about leaving his frail elderly mother for any length of time. We'll continue providing nutrition services, offering congregate meals in Mooresville, Troutman, Statesville, and Harmony, providing a gathering place for seniors to enjoy a balanced meal, as well as their all-important social contact. This helps combat the epidemic of loneliness with all of its attending physical and mental problems. For those too frail to leave home, volunteers will deliver a meal to the lone, isolated senior, who just may appreciate that vital human contact more than the meal. Or perhaps the volunteer will discover the senior who is confused and unable to communicate, just in time to avert a more serious crisis. Or the volunteer may deliver to the COA's newest home-deliver meal clients. Jim and Betty, married 72 years. Jim, now 95, and this is Jim and Betty, and a WWII veteran, can no longer walk. And so Betty, who's a young 94, is, as he puts it, his full-time caregiver. What an amazing couple. And for seniors of all ages, from 60 to 100, and everything in between, needing a variety of services will provide countless opportunities at our Iredell and South Iredell Senior Centers. Programs and activities can include everything from getting help with a long-term care issue, like choosing an assisted-living facility, to cutting through the Medicare maze. Incidentally, Iredell ship volunteers at Seniors Health Insurance Information Program helped 186 seniors in calendar year 2018 and saved those folks over $371,000, according to the North Carolina Department of Insurance. It could be learning to use a computer to Skype with family in a distant state. Or it could be taking a driver's refresher course to improve driving skills. It could even be Tai Chi to improve balance and prevent devastating falls. Or water exercise to deal with limited mobility. Or even chair exercise, incidentally led by an older adult, to increase flexibility and strength. It could be a Parkinson Support Group that now engages in what's called "big" exercises, exaggerated movement that lessens tremors for a while. It could even be chess, or bridge, or canaster, or mahjong, cribbage, or dominoes, or any of a number of board and card games requiring focus and attention, keeping the mind active and engaged, forestalling mental decline. It might even be senior center participants line dancing with clients from Elder Center, or participating in the charitable crafts group making mats for homeless folks. Or it could be a workshop preparing for a disaster, or avoiding a scam, or a series of classes aimed at helping caregivers entitled Powerful Tools for Caregivers. All of these services, services along the continuum of care for frail to active elderly and in-between, are available through the Older Americans Act, which funds the Home and Community Care Block Grant. As many of you will recall, Older Americans Act dollars, which are, in fact, Home and Community Care Block Grant monies, require a minimum 10% local match. The county has helped the COA meet this requirement, and in doing so, brings back $9 in federal funds for every dollar contributed by the county. We appreciate this vital support. I would like to close this evening with something a little different before you have questions. It's, as you think about our aging population, I want you to think about this, as all of us have older adults in our lives in one way or another. And it's entitled this. My children are coming today. My children are coming today, but they worry. They think I should have a railing in the hall, a telephone in the kitchen. They want everyone to have someone come in when I take a bath. They really don't like my living alone. Help me to be grateful for their concern, and help them to understand that I have to do what I can as long as I can. They're right when they say they're a risk. I might fall, I might leave the stove on, but there is no challenge, no possibility of triumph, no real aliveness without risk. When they were young and climbed trees and rode bicycles and went away to camp, I was terrified. But I let them go, because to hold them would have hurt them. Now our roles are reversed. Help them see. Keep me from being grim and stubborn about it, but don't let them smother me. We appreciate your support for our aging community, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Rice?
I just want to say, I'm our representative to her Board, and I just want to say that the seniors that I talked to, I want to applaud you, say you do a great job for them.
Thank you, Mr. Halt.
You're their biggest advocate, and so I just wanted to say thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Halt.
Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Rice, I've been sitting here for a long time off and on, and you come and give your presentation, but I don't know of anybody that stands at that podium and presents their department or their cause with any more passion than you do. I want to thank you for the service that you've given to Iredell County over the years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ball.
We will move on to Section 7, which includes two public hearings for our 7 o'clock meeting. The first public hearing will be a request to consider from Jimmy McKnight at Realco to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of 33.85 acres on Faith Road to the town of Mooresville, and we would ask Mr. Matthew Todd to tee this up.
Good evening to the Board. The request we have for us tonight is outlined in blue, just over 33 acres. It is an ETJ request from the owner slash applicant to be released to the town of Mooresville. This property, they have filed voluntary annexation for December by the town of Mooresville, and it has been approved by the town. The county land use plan does show this property as medium-density residential. And there's an aerial of the property, and I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Mr. Todd, would you explain the difference between an individual asking for ETJ release and then the difference between a municipality coming and asking for ETJ release?
The main difference is this is driven by the actual owner of the property requesting it, as opposed to the town identifying properties and requesting it on their behalf. So this is property owner-driven, and only impacts the property that they own.
Okay. All right. Does anyone on the Board have questions for Mr. Todd?
If not, I'd like to make a motion.
We need to have the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With that said, thank you, Mr. Todd. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we have two gentlemen that have signed up to speak. Number one is Mr. Jimmy McKnight. Could you come to the podium, Mr. McKnight? Please state your name and address, and the person you represent.
My name's Jimmy McKnight. I live at 166 Lake View Shores Loop in Mooresville, and I'm the owner of Realco Investment Properties, and I'm here on behalf of Mrs. Cloninger.
Do you have anything you'd like to open with?
No, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board. Good to see y'all. I want to simply state that I'm here to help Mrs. Rice tonight. We want to build some homes that are nice little cottages for age-targeted empty nesters, small, nice homes.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Would you stand by if there's any questions that could be directed toward you? Our second name is, is it Keith Breting?
Yes.
Yes. If you'd step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Keith Breton, 170 Woodacre Drive. My property doesn't immediately border this, but I am in the neighborhood right through Woodacre Drive, so any homes in that area would affect me. My current concern is with the infrastructure in the area. In the mornings, traffic is backed up on Faith Road. I've seen it backed up to English Hills Drive. And then in the evenings, Mecklenburg Highway is backed up to Waterland Drive on the north, and I've seen it backed up down, what is that, Lake, yeah, I've seen it backed up to Exit 31, coming off 77. There's just that much traffic. People don't want to take Route 3 up through Mooresville to get to 77. So the only thing that is left is Faith Road. So we have to handle all this traffic. Now we're going to put more homes in there and more traffic. Additionally, a large portion of that property is wetland. There's water standing on it a good portion of the year. I was back there earlier today, and there's not currently water on it, but two inches down, there is. So how do you build homes in a swamp? Those are my concerns with this.
Thank you, sir. Sir, do you understand that this ETJ release would be releasing the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville? At this particular point, if the property owner asks to petition to come into the town of Mooresville, then it annexes into the city and becomes a part of the city. The good news on that is, the city has a stormwater program, and any kind of development that would take place in that area would have to develop under the Mooresville standards, which typically are tighter than what the counties are. As far as traffic, that will have to be addressed at the time a plan is presented to Mooresville, and then Mooresville can put the restrictions on it, or require TIA, or whatever they need to require to make sure that the roads are upgraded to handle that amount of traffic. So there will be a fair amount of stuff, hoops that the developer will have to jump through to do that. But there again, at this particular stage of the game, I can't speak specifically to any of that. I'm not sure if Matthew Todd can speak specifically or not.
I can confirm that Mooresville will require the TIA for this.
Traffic impact analysis. And since Mr. McKnight's here, let's ask him to explain some of those items.
Jimmy McKnight, I sort of share his concerns. I travel Faith Road quite often, and I keep up with a lot of the development in the area. So I can tell you that the developer will have to do a study. It's about a $25,000 study that studies traffic impact in that area. The developer will be required to do any road improvements that the traffic study that the town of Mooresville orders that the developer do, make any improvements. One thing that you may not be aware of, there's about a $2.8 million contract that's just been signed to put left-turn lanes at Faith and Highway 115. And so that, that big project for left-turn lanes for Highway 115, north and south, the realignment of Faith so that goes into the back of Lowe's, and left-turn lanes for all four streets, the contract, I believe, was about $2.8 million. It was led about 90 days ago, and so he's going to be seeing some major relief on Faith at Highway 115 in the very near term. In terms of wetlands, we have to do what's called a wet detention ponds. We actually slow down the runoff so that there's less runoff, well, there's the same amount of runoff, but it runs off slower than it does naturally. So we have to build those wet detention ponds based upon, you know, engineering. And so I'd be glad to give him my contact information and get with him sometime and answer maybe some other questions.
Okay. Keith, at that point, a stormwater retention pond is just, as the explanation explains, it retains the water and lets it out slower.
Well, and I understand that, you know, that's going to handle runoff from the neighborhood, but currently, my backyard is flooded four times this year, and I am immediately up the creek from where this land is going to be developed. And some of that water runs off into there before it feeds into the creek that feeds into, what is it, the west branch of Rocky River.
Right.
So that's where that water is warehoused or stored, and they develop that land, it's not going to have anywhere else to sit but on my property, or the property across the creek, which is, you know, been rezoned residential already, with the exception of a portion of it has been given to Mooresville City that was zoned residential. So they want to build that with homes. They are already developing that lane.
Yeah, and I agree with you there. It is concerning. The point that I want you to understand here this evening is, the regs are tighter when Mooresville develops than they are when the county develops, because the county has to set an ordinance that fits the entire county. Mooresville is more specific focused on what happens in Mooresville. Until we see a specific site plan development, it's hard to say what's going to happen on that water, because once they present a plan to Mooresville, if this is approved tonight, they'll present a plan to Mooresville. Mooresville will study it, and they will decide what measures need to be put in place. I think Mooresville does a pretty good job at that, because they have a stormwater program, and they're pretty tight on their specific plans when you come in. They've got a lot more hoops to jump through than the county does. So I really think it's going to help you. But now, there's no way I can sit here at this desk and tell you for sure that's going to happen without seeing a specific plan.
And one thing, Keith, you can look at, the average number of vehicles on that section of Faith Road right now is about 5,400 cars a day, and the capacity of that is 11,000 a day. But that's part of what their TIA will look at, once they have a specific site plan and annexation process and all that. You'll have more answers then, but as Mr. Ball said, it will be more stringent than what we would require.
And I understand that, you know, Iredell County needs to grow, and so does Mooresville. But the infrastructure at this point is just not there to support it. I lived on the north side of Indianapolis for quite a few years, and I don't know if you've seen Carmel, Indiana. They've got traffic circles, more traffic circles than anywhere in the world, I think. They've got some of these, they've got eight lanes coming into them and eight lanes going out, 16 lanes of traffic. You don't stop. I mean, it has alleviated their traffic problem so much, you can get anywhere on that side of the city, so easy. And, you know, I would like, I would like to see something like that, rather than left-hand turn lanes.
Yeah.
It's just, you're going to sit there and wait.
The fact of the matter is, with North Carolina DOT, that road would have to score, is the term they use, to get any help from Raleigh for that. Really, the only way we can get road improvements in our little area is through development dollars and requiring a developer to do it. But the TIA, Transportation Impact Analysis, will tell the town of Mooresville what to require in that area to mitigate the traffic. So we're going to have to wait till all theirs. We're very, very early in the game. You will have an opportunity, if this is passed tonight, you'll have an opportunity to speak at other public hearings in Mooresville. And basically, tonight is to release the zoning jurisdiction, or the zoning control, to the Mooresville town. That's our, Mr. McKnight?
I gave him one of my cards and be glad to speak to him. I want to point out, these are age-targeted homes, shouldn't be any children, no impact on schools, and the peak traffic early in the morning, 6, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning. Folks this age don't usually get up and travel that time of day, so the traffic is pretty well mitigated by the age of the folks that will be living there. So that may help a little bit. Okay? Thank you.
May help get you some relief on that, Keith.
Yeah, but on Saturday night, they cut loose, just know.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone that hasn't signed up that would like to speak for or against this particular item tonight? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions on the Board? Any discussion for the Board? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the request for release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville by Jimmy McKnight.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Our next item of business is item 7.2, public hearing to consider a rezone from Josh Huffstettler, Terramore Development LLC, to rezone approximately 1.6 acres at the corner of Oswalt Amity Road and Bethesda Road for residential agricultural RA to neighborhood business conditional use district. And, Mr. Todd?
This request, this rezoning request, outlined in blue on the screen, corner of Oswalt Amity and Bethesda, 1.69 acres, it is conditional, neighborhood business. Planning Board did vote 5 to 3 to recommend denial of this request. Planning staff was in support of the request. Basically, the planning staff supported it because it's based at the intersection of two moderately trafficked minor thoroughfares. The agreed-upon conditions should hopefully dial the use back to something that would fit into the area, along with the limited permitted uses. The land use plan does show this area to be low-density residential, and part of this request would actually be to amend the land use plan to include this parcel as a future commercial node. This is an aerial of the property. You can see, they've split out some lots going up Bethesda Road. There is at least one house that's being built next to it. This is the, just the proposed site plan at this point, showing the driveway coming off Bethesda Road. This is just a diagram, kind of showing the requirements from the code. There would be some landscaping requirements along Oswalt Amity and Bethesda, along with a buffer and a wooden fence along the back property lines adjacent to the residential zoned properties. Looking north on Bethesda, properties on our left, and looking back at the intersection, south on Bethesda. Looking back Oswalt Amity toward Troutman. The applicants did, part of the conditions is that they would do an upgrade facade on the building, more, an upgraded facade compared to what you normally see with a Dollar General, at least with the county's jurisdiction. They did submit three options, as far as what they're considering. They haven't narrowed that down beyond those three. We're just showing you a couple pictures of the three options. Again, these are just for, I'll say, just to show you, of course, the shape of this building. It looks like the long side would essentially be the front. They also talked maybe about the corner being the entrance to. the entrance to. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Mr. Todd, doesn't look like there's going to be any entrance to Oswald Amity?
Correct.
Everything's going to enter through Bethesda?
Correct.
And it says here that it's a neighborhood business, conditional use district. Did the planning board mention any conditions put on that, other than what you've outlined?
Again, it, it is limited to convenience food, department variety store, grocery store, having the six-foot-tall privacy fence along the perimeter. They also said their signage would be a monument sign as opposed to a pile-on sign, and then upgrade the building facade. So those were, were the only conditions.
And this, and this facility would be served with well-insectic tank, correct?
Um, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Would you stand by for any further questions?
Yes.
Does any, the board members have any questions for Mr. Todd?
Matthew, the opposition at the planning board from, from the surrounding area, what was that like?
Um, there, there was a handful in opposition regarding the request for, for different reasons from, you know, basing it on, it's a, it's a residential area, the homes in the area. Concern over what the Dollar General, I guess, would do to tax value or bring into the area. You know, as referenced, would it, would it be a spot for drug activity? Other concerns. And I know some of those neighbors are here tonight. They could speak in more detail.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Todd? Thank you, sir. Tonight is a public hearing for this particular item. Unfortunately, the Terra Moore Development engineer could not be here tonight to answer questions. So we will be forced to continue this particular public hearing. So what I would like to do is open the public hearing, hear from the people who have signed up to speak, and then we will have to continue this public hearing until-
September 3rd.
September the 3rd. So we don't want to hijack your lives, but it was unavoidable that, that engineer couldn't be here. He's out of the country or something. But we do want him here to answer specific questions about the site development, along with Mr. Todd. I'd like to, at this time, open the public hearing, and I will call Ms. Richard up to speak. Ms. Richard, if you'll state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. We appreciate you taking your time to come out for this due process.
Thank you. Anne Marie Richard. I live at 165 Wheatfield Drive. You could see our little development on the aerial. You can't really see it here. We're just down just a little bit. I'm kind of representing a few in our neighborhood. There's National Night Out in Troutman, there's in Mooresville, then there's Open Houses. So there were several that could not be here.
Right.
And we're just against this Dollar General because there's two within, I think, four and a half miles of us. We just don't need another Dollar General right there. It's not that we're against progress in the county, but Dollar General's not really progress. I mean, it's, it's a nice store. I go there, don't get me wrong. But we just don't need another one. Checked, there's approximately 19 in Iredell County Dollar General stores. I think we're covered. You know, that, along with Family Dollar, is a very general store, just like Dollar General. And one other concern that I have, being a former law enforcement, plus my husband's in law enforcement, Oswald Amity is pretty much a drug highway from Rowan County to Iredell County. You can ask any law enforcement officer, they can back that up. Shady Grove Graveyard is right behind our development. I can go out on my deck any night of the week, and at some point, you're going to see cars, because it's like a little semicircle driveway. Pull in, stop 30 seconds, pull out, all night long. It's just a good midpoint between the counties. Dollar General does get a good amount of calls at any Dollar General for larcenies, suspicious people, whatever. Those employees are just going to be open for crime. Not necessarily saying Dollar General brings crime, I'm just saying they're out in the middle of nowhere. There's, there's no other business around them. It's just, hey, come rob me. So that's kind of my concern. I do, I did find out some calls for service for the Dollar Generals in some of the, in the county. The one in Troutman, which is in a pretty tight location, just in the last year, they had 58 calls for service. Oh, there's two locations on Old Mountain Road. One had 46 calls for service. The other had 126 calls for service. The one on 21115, that one received 225 calls for service. So you can see the variation of when it's in, in the town. There's not maybe as many calls because it's so congested. I'm sorry. The further out you go, the more calls they receive. So it's just a matter of location. Like I said, the closest one, I believe, is three and a half miles from me. I don't mind driving three and a half miles to go to Dollar General if I need something. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Ms. Richards? Thank you. Ms. Richards, do you have, do you, you don't have a copy of that data that you have in your hand, do you?
Just my, just my notes. It came from Ecom. You can actually, I think, call Ecom, and I think they can maybe email something.
Okay.
It would maybe be a little more official.
We'd kind of like to look at that and kind of crunch those numbers together.
Yeah.
I think you've got some interesting points.
Yeah, the calls for service, you know, vary. I mean, it's, but you can see, if you, if you were to get a map and just, and I didn't do this, but you can kind of see the further out you go, the more isolated they are, the higher the number. So.
Okay. Thank you. Our next presenter will be, is it David Clary?
Cali.
Cali? Yeah. If you would, David, come and state your name and address for the record when you get to the podium, sir.
Hey, my name is Dave Calery. My wife and I have had the pleasure, with just this past week, moving to this area. We're leaving the beach and moving up here, and we're very happy to be here. So we'll be living at 1097 Oswald Amity, which is the piece of property right across Bethesda Road. Right? Since this began, I do a lot of traveling around the state of North Carolina, and I've paid particular attention to try to find the Dollar Generals and their location. And I am yet to see a single one that is in the middle of an absolute residential area. I've seen them at the tail end of commercial areas. I've seen them in the middle of commercial areas. I'm yet to see one in a position like this one, which is right in the middle of a residential area. To back up what our last speaker was saying, I do not have the exact information with me because this is what I put out at the planning board. But I looked up and found a survey of 39 Dollar Generals. They did a study over a three-year period in Memphis, Tennessee. And over a three-year period, you're looking at a little over 1,000 days, there was over 9,400 calls from those Dollar Generals for police assistance. Seventy, 740 of those calls were Class 1 calls. Anything, that's anywhere from larceny to, to murder. There was recently in this, in this state, a girl that was shot mid-afternoon in the parking lot of a Dollar General. Right? So I, I can back up what she's saying as far as the crime. Another concern of mine is, along the Bethesda Road area there, and where they're putting in the extra houses, you're going to end up dealing with about six or seven driveways in about a 300-foot span of the road. I know that when people turn that corner right now, Bethesda is a drag strip. The intersection is, comes, there's curves that come into the intersection from all three sides, and it's very typical for me to pull out in either direction. And by the time I get up anywhere near up to speed, I've got someone right on my bumper that wasn't because they came around that curve. So the traffic is, is a real concern for us. I truly believe that if that store goes in, we will kill somebody within six months on that intersection. Right? When I came to the planning board meeting, planning board meeting, one of the things that I was unaware of and kind of shocked me that I didn't understand was this Horizon 2030 plan. And since that time, I've done a tremendous amount of reading and studying on its 113 pages. Some of the things that come out of that are the land use maps, and they list this as strictly residential agricultural. Residential agricultural, the definition of that is land that will remain rural in character. Uses in this, in this area generally will include farming use, single-family residence, churches, parks, and accessory buildings. It does not give options for multifamily buildings, apartment complexes, and nowhere in there does it state anything, give any opportunity for a commercial application. So that, that's, that concerns me too there. I'm sure y'all are aware of the Horizon 2030 plan. The land development code is an attachment to that, that actually became a statute in this, in this county. On Table 2.6 lists common uses of permitted in all the different areas. And it lists, in this particular land development code lists every zoning area that you have in the county. And particularly, if you look at the RA zoning, nowhere in there. It lists probably 25 different things that the land can be used for. Nowhere in there does it list anything having to do with a, a commercial operation with a convenience store. If you, if you leave Bethesda and head towards 21, it's about three miles to where you get to Highway 21. That particular intersection right now, you just put a light up there, out of the four corners of that intersection, two of them are up for sale. That's the place for a store like this, not right in the middle of everybody's backyard. There is nothing commercial, once you leave Highway 21, until you get all the way to the other end of Oswald Amity where it contacts with Highway 70. Which, by the way, there's a Dollar General there, too. So if I go down Bethesda Road till I reach 70, there's a Dollar General. If I go down Oswald Amity until I reach Highway 70, there's a Dollar General. If I go to 21 and turn left, it's not but a few miles down that road till there's a Dollar General. Or I can turn to the right and go into Troutman, and there's a Dollar General. I just don't see the sense in putting something like this in the middle of everybody's backyard, basically. So what, what, what I'm basically here tonight for is to, to plead with the board not to allow a store of this nature to go in, like I said, in the middle of our backyard. Right?
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody have questions for David? Okay. Ms. Greer, if you would come to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Marsha Greer. Sorry, I get real nervous speaking in front of people. So if I start getting quivery, that's why.
It's fine.
My property-
We yell at people that get nervous.
And then I'm walking out. No, I'm not. My property is this right here. It is my understanding, I, I mean, the Dollar General store, you know, we live out in the country. Putting something like that is really ridiculous in the middle of a country area. I mean, I only want to say, when is enough enough? When does the rezoning stop to where you allow people to actually buy pieces of property and put their homes? This two acres right here have already been sold. I've spoke with the owners there. These two acres are under contingent. This right here has already got a home on it. And the driveway that runs right here around their property, there's a culvert that they had to put in right there. As I said, this is my land. This right here is a big gully. And it's on our property. If by any chance I ever hit the lottery, I'm turning it into a pond.
There you go.
But, no chance. But anyhow, what I'm trying to get at is, we get all of the runoff, no matter whether it's this Dollar General or all these people's property, for the simple fact that we live in a dip. We don't need no more. We're out in the country. The zoning has got to stop. And if you can, just please keep the Horizon the way it is, and look at it in 2030. Obviously, the land is being sold. It's slowly going, but it is being sold. And all of this right here is up for sale for development. This has already been sold for development. So you've got houses. We moved to the country for a particular reason. Another thing I have a complaint about is, right here, this is our driveway. We've lived there for 22 years, and our mailbox has been knocked down six times, for the simple fact that people, they fly. I mean, I'm not going to say that these other people that move in, their mailboxes ain't going to get hit either. There's a big possibility. But when you put a grocery store, or gas station, or whatever there, you're going to have a lot more people stopping to get in because right here is the proposed driveway to go in. I mean, there was just a wreck there last week, and it took out this driveway right here. It took out their little privacy sign. That was just last week. And it doesn't stop. I mean, it continues. You put something like that, you're just going to build, like he said, you're going to add more problems, and you're going to wind up, somebody's going to be getting killed. The same way as it happened with Triplet and 70. When that first went in, the deaths that were there was unnecessary. And I know that you fixed it, but we're not a problem. We need to stay the way we are.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Greer? Do you have goats?
Yes.
I know where you live. Yeah.
You know where I am?
I come by there all the time. I admire those goats.
Do you really? Yeah. But I don't know how you see them, because my pigs and goats are down here.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'd see something back in the pasture back there.
Then you, yeah, then you probably see us, but-
Probably with no tree, leaves on the trees.
Yeah, when there's no leaves, you can see us from the road. But, and we're welcoming neighbors. We really, you know, we don't have a problem with having neighbors to move in. But to have something like that, like they said, we've got one in three different directions. We're out in the middle of the country. And I know for a fact that if y'all lived in the country, you wouldn't want one in your backyard. I know that for a fact because that's the reason we moved to the country, is to get away from all of that.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
We have one other gentleman that has signed up, Mike Foy.
Fox.
Fox. Okay, I'm sorry. Mike Fox. Mike, if you would, step up there and state your name and address for the record so it'll get on the recording, so all the folks in internet land can hear what you're saying and know who you are.
My name is Mike Fox. I live at 1019 Oswald Amity. Where you see the red roof building, the house that they're there, and the, we just don't need something like that to ruin our neighborhood. Because when I first moved there, all these houses at the bottom corner weren't there. I mean, it's just all farmland. And so about two years ago, we fought that stump dump on the end of Amity Hill in Oswald. But we lost. But them guys do a really good job. They've kept it looking good and done what we required. But we've got a tremendous amount of dump trucks now, which, you know, but that's, but we have a lot of traffic on Oswald Amity for people going to Freightliner.
Yeah.
I mean, a tremendous amount. And when they get off work, or going to work, it's just like a racetrack.
Yeah. I'm sure.
But we want to keep, you know, this gentleman, I can't remember his name, but he lives right over there. He just bought this and moved from the beach away, I think. And he wanted to be, and now he's going to be sitting right there looking at that Dollar General. And then the people that moved right there beside it, they never knew that was going to happen. So we need to keep it looking like the country.
Okay. I appreciate you coming, sir. And let me reiterate that we will need to continue this tonight, and it's in an effort to give the developers of the Dollar General their due process. But it is also a couple extra- But it is also a couple extra weeks for you folks to think about things, and you would be welcome to come back and speak again. We're going to take the information that you've given us this evening, and we're going to do a little bit more research on that because I think you've raised some valid questions. But we appreciate you taking time out of your life to come up here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Can I just make a brief comment?
Sure.
For the folks that came out tonight and spoke in opposition, if I can just give you a couple of words of advice as we kind of go forward. I mean, the Troutman area is growing, so when you think about how you're going to state your argument, people are going to buy this prop, people are going to buy the property in your area, and they are going to do something different with it. And we can't tell somebody just because, and just so you know, I mean, we've all lived this, okay? If somebody has a farm, they don't want to farm anymore, he wants to be able to sell it, and if nobody wants to buy it to farm, they want to build houses on it, they want to do something different with it. And we can't tell them that they can't do that because we like driving by a pasture and seeing cows. We all would rather drive by a pasture that has cows in it as opposed to a subdivision that's got 126 homes or, you know, businesses that we might not want to be there. So if you're making the argument that, well, there's, this is going to make more cars come, more cars are coming, that's probably not your best argument. The next thing is if you're saying, well, I don't think this is a good place for Dollar General. Dollar General's already decided. They've done the numbers. I promise, they think they can come there and make money. And we don't approve or disapprove zoning based upon whether or not we think the business would be successful. Okay? If we think a business is going to move in there and lose money, we cannot turn them down because, well, we don't, we don't think, we think that we have enough ice cream shops. You know, yours is another ice cream shop, it's probably not going to make money, so we turn you down.
Did I close the pod here?
We can't do that. But what I would say is, so if you're making an argument that you don't think it's a big, a good business model, I promise, they'll show up with a business model that is. Making the argument that this is, that the 2030 Plan unamended, that we have to amend our own plan, is your best argument. Because that's our plan, and we already approved it as it is, and we have to amend it to allow somebody to build that store there. So when you come back, it just, I think that allows you to frame your argument in a way that we can use your argument, okay? Because I understand what you're saying, and we need to hear the other folks out, but I thought our last speaker, which I think we all agree that we're not going to beat you with sticks because you were nervous. But I think you were on the right, on the right path. And the gentleman that moved from the beach to live here, we have mental health services for people who move from the beach to Troutman, North Carolina. We're glad that you're here, and we've heard you, but that would be, that would be my advice. This isn't a public, I'm sorry, we're not going to make a decision tonight. I would just encourage you to come back with arguments that are relevant to the point that we have to decide on.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we, before we close, before, I'm going to make a motion to continue, but before I do that, what I want to say is after the planning board met, the calls that I got were along those lines. People were questioning, you know, with our staff recommending, what I want, I was going to ask Matthew, with our staff recommending to move forward with it. My concern with that is, is it would require a 2030 Horizon Amendment. And if you do look at, because it was pointed out to me in the phone calls as well, along the lines as Commissioner Robertson, the Land Development Code doesn't allow it. So the people that called me and concerned with this made that argument that it wasn't consistent with 2030 Horizon Plan. It didn't fall within the allowed usage with the Land Development Code, but our staff recommended it. So I just, I wanted you before the next meeting to, I read your staff recommendation, and it pertained mostly, I believe, to the low-traffic volume, if I'm not mistaken. I'm just reading your staff recommendation. But I just wanted Ken to know, the calls I had gotten about this, and there were a lot, was along the lines of, why are we going to allow something that contradicts our 2030 Horizon and is not allowed in our Land Development Code? So I just wanted Ken to know, those arguments been made per Mr. Carley's argument, and for the record, that is the heartburn I have. And I know, as Mr. Robertson said, we're going to have growth in our county, but the 2030 Horizon Plan and the Land Use Code is there to help guide us with that growth.
Let me say one quick thing. From our staff's recommendation, approaches it for more of a technical...
They do.
More of a technical, it technically fits in there. Planning Board, which is another level of you folks' due process, has voted five to three to deny it. So we have to look at that as well. I'd like to ask David to stand and speak no more than two minutes. He's got something else he'd like to say.
Sure. I just want to ask a question. The reason I discussed the Horizon 2030 Plan was because that was put into effect, it took 18 months for the offer to develop it. You have awards from the state for the, you know, for the process and so forth. And then the Land Development Code on July 1st of 2011 states it became an ordinance. So is it my understanding, or it seems to be my understanding, in order for you to zone this, to rezone it, actually you have to change the law? Because, you know, what I'm reading here is that this Land Development Code is actually following this thing. Is that...
We would have, we would have to amend the 2030 Horizon Plan. We wouldn't have to change the law.
Which we've amended it many times, and in defense of staff, I mean, when growth has come into an area, especially a high-traffic area, and an intersection in a high-traffic area, we, this, this board has tended to support those being converted from RA when it, you know, when it was mainly A, agricultural and less, you know, less homes. And as they, as those areas were clearly going to become where a series of subdivisions were, this board has tended to be willing to turn intersections into commercial nodes. So the staff has been reasonable and consistent with their recommendation. The planning board also...
Yes.
Has been reasonable and consistent with their concern, as you are. This is why we get paid the big bucks, is, is, you know, when do you, when do you allow that growth to change the plan? And when do you say, we're not going to do it here, which is why I made the comments that I did about how you might want to phrase your argument when you come back.
Okay. We've written, we, thank you. We really need to move on. Is there, and we will, we're going to entertain a motion in just a moment to continue this public hearing. So your voice still has due process on September the 3rd. So if you want to kind of regroup, and then we'll have the Development Corporation in here, and you can fire some shots at them and see, and answer specific questions. You have raised questions tonight that our staff is going to want to research a little bit. So at that particular time, I'll entertain a motion.
And that was my point, just to say, it wasn't a criticism. It was to let our director know the calls I got was along those lines. It wasn't a criticism. Because I know, like Ken said, that's y'all's job. But along those lines, I'll make a motion to leave the matter open and continue the public hearing on September 3rd at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much, public, for coming tonight.
Vice Chairman Bowles, I do have one point of clarification that I failed to mention. Poor Ms. Rice, she is still, she is still here. I failed to mention that we actually do need to approve the Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan that was presented, and I apologize for that.
Hey, I think it'd be a great time to approve that, right? I'm sorry, Ms. Rice. I'm kind of new at this job. Motion to approve our community block grant funding plan.
He made it.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now we will proceed to items that are appropriate for the consent agenda. Would you outline those for us, Ms. Jones?
Absolutely. Thank you. The first item was discussion regarding adjustments to the agenda, and there were two changes to that agenda. One was to remove item 8.3 under Administrative Matters, and the other was to add Commissioner Comments from Commissioner Hopp under New Business. And that consent agenda, and that agenda was agreed by, to place consent for approval. The other item was a request from Tax Administration to prevent, to present the annual tax settlement for 2018 along with orders for collection. There was a request from ECOM for approval of the First Amendment to the Mooresville Tower Lease Agreement, which was to add and change the exhibit that's attached to that agreement regarding updated equipment with our new move to the new Public Safety Center. There was a request from Parks and Recreation Department for approval of sponsorship opportunity package for the purpose of further developing amenities at various parks and facilities throughout the county. There was discussion regarding this, and the final decision was to table this for the August 20th meeting with two caveats. One, to spell out in more detail advertisements that are congruent with the mission, vision, and goals of the Aradell County Parks and Recreation Department. And also to modify the process to allow for a bidding procedure or process as opposed to a first-come, first-served basis for these sponsorships. There was a request from the Parks and Recreation Department for approval of a naming rights policy for significant donations or contributions made specifically to the Aradell County Park properties. This item was also tabled for our August 20th meeting for the same, the same provisions. And then finally, there was a request from the Clerk to the Board for the, for approval of the minutes from a meeting on July the 9th, 2019.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We will move on now to announcements to boards and vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, and there are none. Move to the next item, which is the appointments to boards and commissions. We have one appointment this evening, and I believe it is to the Community Child Protection Team. We have this one appointment, and we have one application.
Yes, the appointment is Jody Belcher, which this is a very specific appointment, and this individual has volunteered to serve. She is actually a nurse and fits the requirements for that position.
Do I hear a motion to approve her?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our next item up is going to be unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business? Hearing none, we will move on to public comment period, which happens our second meeting of the month, so that won't be applicable tonight. We'll move on to new business. Anybody have anything for new business?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one important thing. There was a social media article and a article in the Record Landmark this weekend talking about, you know, schools are about to go back in session. And with all going on in our society, the sheriff had an article and a comment on social media about the additional SROs and safety measures that are going on throughout the county. And when I attended church and since then, I've had tremendous positive feedback. I wanted to thank our board, the school boards, our administration, and the sheriff and law enforcement for supporting proactively the additional measures that it's requiring to make the school safer. And for whatever reason, you know, it struck me in conversation with people, the quarter cent revenue stream failed last year that would have been used for safety and security. And people, for some reason, they have to read it in the newspaper to believe that's what we needed it for. So I just wanted to thank you guys publicly and mention that, and also bring to light, I went and met with the sheriff to let him know. And the public understands now, you know, with a quarter cent failing and all of these needs, it does require a revenue stream. And so I just wanted to remind us to be looking for, and the public, you know, with a revow like it was, I think our board could have considered a tax, property tax decrease had the quarter cent passed. But, you know, there's statistics out there on a national level that goes along with SROs, mental health counselors, social workers, there's a lot of things, you know, door locks, camera systems, communication in the schools. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly say, we as a society have to decide. You know, we're going to have to invest revenue to provide safety and security that the public seems to support, but we need a revenue stream. We're tasked, this board along with the school boards are tasked to distribute tax dollars in an efficient manner to pay for these things. So I just wanted to remind people that these type things cost money, requires revenue stream, but people appreciated the proactive measure that we have taken. And I just wanted to pass that on to you guys and give you guys the opportunity to respond, especially in light of what's going on nationally in our societies.
Thank you, Commissioner Hopp. Anything further for new business? County managers report.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Bowles. Just to let everyone know that our ribbon cutting for the Public Safety Center is scheduled for August the 23rd at 10:00 AM, and invitations are going out for that. The Aradell County Economic Development Corporation has selected a new president and CEO. That will begin on August the 19th. Jen Bosser is coming to us from the City of Raleigh, the Office of Economic Development and Innovation. She has 20 years of experience in economic development, nonprofit management experience, and I think she's going to be a really good addition to, to the county and being here and helping us grow this county in a good diversified way. So I'm thrilled to announce that our Social Services Department submitted their Medicaid Training and Processing Labs Program to, to the LGFCU Excellence and Innovations Awards this year, and they were selected as a recipient. So they will be recognized at the NCAA C Conference, and Chairman Hopp, I mean, Commissioner Hopp, I think you're going to be there at that conference. So they will be there to be recognized for, for their, their creative ideas of how to work in a very difficult environment with very stringent, and we've all talked about this, the requirements and the criteria that they have to meet, that they have to meet that's been put upon them. And they have tried to come up with very creative and different ways to work under these pressures and still meet all the different goals and requirements that have been placed upon them, and they have been recognized for this. And so we're very, very happy to, to announce our Social Services Department has been, is going to be recognized for this award. Also, they will get a $1,000 award that will go back to the department. So that's, we're very happy about that. Tax bills, as Mr. Furchess said earlier, tax bills will be going out on Friday. These bills will reflect the new values as part of our reappraisal process in any jurisdictions that had increases in tax rates. That will be reflected in these bills. I do want to say this, and Mr. Furchess did point this out. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, every year they conduct a property tax survey of all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina. They published that survey this year. Last year, when you look at all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina, our 2018 tax rate for Aradell County was the 15th lowest out of 100 counties. Our tax rate was the 15th lowest. This year, in 2019, 2020, our tax rate, which remained unchanged, we kept it the same, it remained unchanged, it went from being the 15th lowest to the 13th lowest. So there are 12 counties that have a lower tax rate than Aradell County in all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina. So I think that speaks volumes to the work that this board does to try to provide necessary, vital, and required services to the citizens and do it in a very fiscally responsible way. And just want to commend the board for that because I know it was a tough decision to not roll the tax rate back, but with all the demands that we have for services and all the needs that are out there, even with the decision to keep the tax rate constant and the same, you went from the 15th lowest... and the same, you went from the 15th lowest tax rate to the 13th lowest tax rate. So I think that's commendable, and I do want to, want to announce that and share that with the public.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Our next item is closed session. There will be actionable items from that closed session in the economic development area, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have four actions. Action one is, I make a motion to call for a public hearing on August 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive, $324,000, over a five-year period for Project Blueberry, based on a $20 million investment in Aridale County.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
Action two, from closed session, I make a motion to call for a public hearing on August 20th, 2019, 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $211,000 over a five-year period for Project Starling, based on a $13 million investment in Aridale County.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, action three, from closed session, I make a motion to call for a public hearing on August 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $169,000 over a five-year period for Project Statesville, based on a $10 million investment in Aridale County.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, action four is, I would like to make a motion to approve an extension of 90 days to enter into an economic incentive agreement for Project Blue Ribbon.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. I will entertain, entertain a motion at this time to adjourn.
Motion move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This concludes our August the 6th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting here in Aridale County. Resteaden.